Okay, we'll go ahead and call our meeting's order and want to thank all of our guests for being here tonight. Appreciate you being here. We're gonna have our plates and leads us and then Matt McCracken is going to lead us in our invocation. And if you would lead us in our place, this is where Matt's gonna come.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic where wisdom stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we pause to give you thanks for this great day, for the freedoms that we enjoy living in the wonderful United States of America. Lord, we pray right now for your blessings upon the leadership of this town as they make decisions that affect the town. We pray that you grant safety to those that live, work, and travel through Hamilton. Father, we just would like to be reminded constantly that there's always more grace in you than there is sin in us. We ask that you forgive us where we fail. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
First thing on the table tonight is a recommendation to approve our minutes from our last council meeting, July 20th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Which one?
Go ahead.
Second? Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Number two is a recommendation to approve accounts payable bills. Is there a motion to approve those bills?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor, say aye. Number three, Angela's kinda explaining here what it is. The line of credit at First National Bank that we use for our projects on the 43 South Utility Relocation Project, we just need to renew that for about nine months until we get the project finished. It's not completed yet. That's what we've been doing for the last two or three years on these state projects. As we do the projects, we pay the contractors, then we get reimbursed by the state, but it takes sometimes two or three months before we get reimbursed. And if we renew it for nine months, I don't think it'll take about two or three months because they're almost done. But that'll give us time to make sure everything is completed, everything's closed out, and Angela can close this account for our auditors and our accountants. It's just actually just renewing what we already have. So would there be a motion to do that?
I make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I abstain.
Okay. Number four, Emily, if you would come forward please ma'am, and Tim, you and Matt somebody. Emily's been working on this for several months. And she's got us something to look at that's completed and ready to go. Would you please give the council some approval and blessing if you're willing to do it? Have we met with her today?
Yep, I'm sure. The information you have in front of you is the floor plan and the exterior front of the new fire station. The plan hasn't changed a whole lot from when I showed it to you a couple of months ago. It's color-coded so I could kinda help break it down if you have any questions so that way you can ask about any of the spaces. But essentially, the majority of the building are the two bays for the fire trucks. And then we have on the plan, it'll be on the left side of that, we have the gear room, a laundry room, and a storage room. The storage room originally was generator and we still have the generator planned, but it's gonna be outside now due to the size of that generator. And then on the inside of the building, the public would come in over on the right side, kinda towards the bottom of the drawing there. And there'll be two offices, and then we have a break room, two toilets, and two sleeping areas, and a couple of showers. And then we have a larger training room on the backside of the building. So that's pretty much it. There's not a lot of extra fluff in it. The finishes are CMU, the construction of the main walls are CMU, and then we do have some roof veneer in some parts of the building. And then we have structural steel for roof support, and then we have a modified bitumen roof above the
Explain what that roof is and tell Tim and I to be able for everyone else to know what that is.
Right, it's a slightly sloped roof. It's on a quarter inch per foot slope, so it's almost flat, but it's not. It slopes to the back. Actually, all of the building drainage will drain to the back into what's called a scupper. And then that scupper will be taken out from the downspout to underground and then taken underground off-site. So there won't be any waterfall from the building onto the site directly. But the modified bitumen roof is essentially just a it's what used to be, it's akin to like what a four or five built-up roof used to be a long time ago except for kind of the new and improved super it's actually two flats, base sheet and a cap sheet. But they basically weld the base sheet together and then apply the cap sheet on top of that. And then it goes you don't have as much flashing. You have base flashing, but then the actual roof goes up the sides of the inside of the well, the exterior building is on the inside where the roof does. That way you have a complete watertight building. So it's kinda, it'll be a white roof, so it's a cool roof. It helps with energy efficiency and things like that.
Twenty-year warranty, you said?
Yeah. That's what we set down.
So is this, this is a done deal? There's no changes?
The drawings that we have right now are finalized. If we wanna make changes, we can make some minor changes, but structurally, mechanically, it's pretty pretty close to being. It's bidable right now. We have, what we're asking for tonight is to be able to advertise so that we can be out, we need to we have right now the dates we have is if we could advertise, we would hold a pre-construction conference on August the 20th and August the 25th, and then open bids on September 3rd. If we could go ahead, if we could approve that, we can get the advertisement in the paper to do that.
What's your thoughts on construction?
Well, I have six months in the documents right now. It could be built in less time than that, but you know, if you start shrinking that time, there's a premium cost to that. Sometimes it will, you know, people will put a little bit higher price in a short length of time. It could be built in four months. It's not a big building. It's 4,000 square feet. It's all CMU construction. It's not a complicated building at all. The only, there's no long lead items really for this building, so but right now I have six months in the construction.
Emily, tell us a little bit about the floor cover and walls, ceilings, things that's pretty basic, because I know you've tried to keep
Throughout the building, it's
Nothing's elaborate, I understand.
No. Throughout the building, it's pretty much sealed concrete. There are a couple of rooms that we did put carpet in and a ceiling in just because we needed it for acoustics. You don't want a training room that you can't hear in, so we do have a ceiling in there. We have carpet in the offices just because they're kinda small and if you don't put any soft surf, if we only have hard surfaces, you won't be able to hear anything. And then there is jit board, interior walls in the admin area where the office and the break room and those places are, so that's just four-inch stud walls and five-eighth inch jit. And then there is some ceramic tile in the showers. But other than that, it's most, most of the floor surfaces is are sealed concrete. And most of the wall surfaces are either jit board or exposed CMU painted. There's not really any real fluff in there.
And you're now talking today. What's the exterior's wooden, I mean, it's block, you know, brick?
Yes, the exterior of the building is block, but it's split face block, which has got a little bit of a texture to it so that it doesn't appear like just a flat block building like you have in here. It's got sort of a texture to it. But it's a three-color, so you don't have to paint it or anything like that. It stays its color.
So once it's built, there's nothing to maintain outside?
Well, you'll have to apply some waterproofing every you know, few years like you would any other building, but there's no painting to be done on the exterior of the building.
And first, the cost of just having a metal building like we have over here. You said that would not meet code at this time?
Essentially, what you have over there is just a straight metal building. The reason it's, we have a CMU building here is because fire stations, police stations, hospitals, all get what's called an importance factor built onto them, which means that they essentially have to have 15% more structure applied to them as opposed to any other regular building. That 15%, what you would have to do to maintain a metal building in terms of the additional structure that you would need for the metal building. It then, the CMU building, which is a much more sturdy building, the cost difference between the two is not significant when you have to beef up the structure of the metal building. So what you have over there is not what would meet code today. Not that it didn't meet code back then, it's just that the code is a little bit more stringent now. You can't have just a straight metal building as a fire station.
Great.
So this is on my end?
Tim?
Yes.
On my end?
Yes.
But we're gonna finish it.
There are some finishes, yes, but primarily it's concrete and block. There's some paint on the jit board walls and some paint on some CMU, but yes, there is carpet in there just because if you don't install carpet, you're not gonna be able to use the space in the offices or the training room. Yet there are minimal finishes to it. Not all of the rooms have carpet. The break room doesn't have carpet. It's it has just a concrete floor. There is a ceiling in there just because the light fixtures are just better hung in an acoustical ceiling in a space like that than they are just hung for structure. But the structure's a little high in there for that.
And no, I asked you this before, but there's no storage over the bays. There's no extra storage like there is at this building?
There is no storage over the bays. There are a couple of storage rooms, but no storage over the bays.
Or actually, it's not over the bays there, it's over the
Over the aggregate portion of it. Right, yeah. We don't have that kinda space. This building is not as tall as the fire station you have over there.
The inside of the ceilings and the bays, are they just open?
That's just open structure painted.
Is that what it is everywhere except for the offices and the training room?
The ceiling, the sleeping rooms need to have a ceiling. There's just things that you have to put in the ceilings. You have to have occupancy sensors in a lot of these spaces. And fire alarm, you know, when you start hanging a lot of that stuff, some of the spaces need ceilings just to be able to hang that kinda thing. So the sleeping rooms, the offices, the break room have laying, and the training room have laying ceilings. And then the toilet and the showers have actually a jit board ceiling in them, just for you know, it's got a mold-resistant jit board ceiling in there.
Tim, is there anything you had to this tonight?
Really, the only thing that will be finished out in there like she said would be the two offices and the training room. The rest of it's just there for wood to grow.
So there's no appliances?
There are appliances currently in the project. You can bid those you know, out of the project. You don't have to bid those in the project. The only appliances we have in there is a stove, a dishwasher, a refrigerator, and a microwave. And that's, you know, kind of minimal use appliances. If you do have a disaster of some sort and you need to operate out of there, you know, those are kinda minimal items.
So there's really not a lot to cut out, other than maybe a few appliances that may just
If you didn't wanna bid the appliances, you certainly could not cut out that.
That wouldn't say much.
Right. We are bidding, the way the documents are set up, the generator is being bid as an add alternate, which means that on the day that you receive bids, you'll get a cost as to what it would cost to put the generator in. But you would have a choice as to whether or not you wanted to accept that price. So you can, you know, when you decide to sign the final contract for construction, you can either build it base bid without the generator, or you can add, if you think it's a that you can afford to build the generator now, then you can add that in to it. So that's just going to be bid as an add alternate, because it's not a requirement. But if you are using it at, you know, if everybody else is down and you're using it as emergency response center, you might wanna have the generator, but it's not necessarily required.
We have a generator here, don't we?
Yes.
And it has been used when power and snow and electricity's out? How often's it kick on?
Well, Ronin wants a week. Just Ronin wants a week.
Yeah, you still have to run it to upkeep it.
But has it been used before?
Oh, yeah, in tornadoes several times. Power's off in a given length of time. Had people come up here and just bum the Austin machines and sit here for several hours just because nowhere else to get it.
Tim, what's your suggestion?
Got lots to see to done.
If the council's comfortable with this tonight?
You know, the training room, the training room is the big thing. We need that. We gotta have a training two-acre spot for NISO for our training. That's our big thing. You know, it's
And what will be stored in these bays?
We'll have one of the new trucks out there, and we've got a hazardous material trailer, a mass casualty trailer, and our rescue command center. We've got them ported, ported shop right now. They need to be inside somewhere. We just haven't had anywhere to put them.
They're currently outside behind the building?
I got room to put them down there for out there, get them out of there.
I said we did. And we, we got those on grants from EMA.
Right.
Has the estimated cost changed?
Emily, do you have an estimated?
The estimated cost, it's right at 4,000 square feet, and I'm estimating, you know, at anywhere between $90 and $100 a square feet, so you know, anywhere from
I think we're both thinking around 400 to 450 for that building, I'm not really sure.
That's kind of where the estimate is.
We don't know until bids come in, but it should be if your estimates are close, maybe those bids will be close. What can we do then? If it came in just extremely high on all of them, we could then go back and if we need to make cuts or adjustments or?
There are some things we can do. There's different types of I was talking to Tim earlier and you the doors that we have out here, FRP doors, that's a kind of a new improved exterior door. It's kind of better than a hollow metal door. You don't paint them, you don't, they don't warp. It's just a manufactured door instead of a straight hollow metal door. We, you know, have been putting those in schools for quite some time now, and they, they actually are a better door than a hollow metal door. Especially if the building's not being occupied full-time, I would recommend using those doors. They are a little bit more expensive, so if we had to cut, we could use that. There's not a real sophisticated HVAC system in here or electrical or plumbing, so there's not a lot of real meat to cut out of it. We can nitpick out a little bit and get some money out, but I really don't think it's I think it's gonna be fine when the bids come in. I don't see it really going over that amount. There's not a whole lot of stuff in it though, man.
Well, I'm okay with, if the council's okay to go ahead and give permission to submit the bids and advertise for bids and see where they come in at. And you know, if it were to come in just way more than what we thought, then maybe we might put something else, you know, change it. I know you've done a basic building, nothing elaborate in this building. Trying to keep the cost down. You know, the council's okay, I'm okay if this were on.
Well, I'm sort of in a bad position because Scott's not here. If we vote tonight, I will abstain because I voted to buy the trucks. And the trucks without the building aren't going to affect me, but the trucks and the building together are going to benefit me. So I'm in a bind. I mean, I don't, without Scott here, I don't know what to do.
How would this benefit?
Because I live on that side of town and my insurance is going to drop.
But we're not asking to accept bids. We're just asking to advertise. Whether or not, when the bids come in, you'll vote again as to whether or not you're gonna accept those bids or not accept them. So you're not really you're not actually saying build the building tonight. Right now, all I'm asking for is to be able to advertise for, advertise for bids. So you know, we'll go out to bid in 30 days from now. We'll, you know, sit in there, we'll open bids, and we'll see what the numbers are, and then y'all get generally two weeks to decide if you're gonna accept it. And from that point, you'll either accept it as is, or you'll negotiate with the lowest bidder to to do whatever. But at this time, we're just asking to advertise the project. We're not asking you to start construction on it.
So do we accept this, or we just advertise for this?
This is the, if, right now, if you accept, if you tell me tonight that we can go out for bids, this is what we're gonna bid for construction. This is the price that they're gonna give you back if it comes in at $400,000. They're gonna say it's $400,000 to build this building.
So when we vote tonight, if we accept, or if we agree to advertise for bids, we're accepting this proposal. Because in the beginning, we just voted for you to be the architect. We didn't agree on this building, so tonight if we advertise for bids, we're agreeing on the building.
That's correct.
Wait, I think, I wanna make a motion and go ahead and take bids because I mean, from what the ISO has said, and you know, we've been trying to help some of the folks out, 278, I I thought that was the whole deal, you know? Just go ahead and go ahead and get it started. So I think we, you know, I'll make a motion away.
Make sense?
I'll say it.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I think next time we have a big project like this, council needs to be informed more about.
Well, I mean, she has been.
What's going on? I was talking about her. Just what, she's done a good job on it.
Done a great job.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Next, Andrea? I asked Andrea to come tonight. Over the last couple of weeks, Andrea and I have been to the bank building a few times. And she actually knew the was the architect or?
Architect.
That ended construction.
Donald Parker was the architect on the original bank building.
On the original, after this, all that. So she was able to get floor plans and talk with them. And just last week, she was even on top of the roof, looking at a roof for us with a roofing contractor. And what I really need is to kinda get permission for Andrea to be our liaison, our consultant. We don't nearly know exactly what it may cost us, because we don't know what how much project it's gonna take to get this to what we need to be. We need Andrea to be on board, and I just wanna get permission from the council to to do that. And Andrea, I'm gonna just turn it over and let you kinda tell where we're at right now. And where you think we might be headed, and you know, we have a lot to do there, and you can probably tell us where we're gonna begin in a better way of what we're thinking about, isn't there, buddy?
To this point, we've just been gathering the existing information. Taking the reference drawings from Donald Parker's office up in Tuscany. And we were just evaluating the existing conditions of the roof, which is the main problem with water coming in. And HVAC systems. And then the existing floor plan, and how that might need to be modified a little bit to meet codes and to meet the needs of the city hall and the water department. The cable company that come in. So that's all that's been looked at to this point.
And you've already done quite a bit of, you know, drawings and just
Just analyzing.
Just analyzing, but you know, as we get into this, we're gonna need somebody that we depend on and just, you know, have a project manager or consultant, architect, whoever that position will be. And I'd like for it to be you, so.
We had spoken, you know, I've looked at what you use now presently and how that will move over. And how the square footage compares, and I've kinda given the mayor's office those numbers and looked at that. That's fixed in my
Yeah, she's, she's got all the drawings, she's sitting all here, what we have in each room. And after the water department, kinda fixed that in a way where the water department would fit into the bank where their, where the bank towers is on that end of the building, and also have a place for cable company, because I think they're gonna come too. So it's gonna take some remodeling in there, and somebody that knows this construction and knows this design, and so we need her on board, you know, to do that. We really don't know, Andrea, I mean, Andrea, you talked about fees, but we don't, until you get
A scope of work. And decide what you're gonna do. Then we can decide how that's gonna be bid. The roof could be separate to the interior. There's a lot of options that need to be discussed before.
We need to go ahead and get that roof fixed, but
Yes, sir.
And just leave.
She's been up there, and it's got like six skylights. Two are leaking terribly. Andrea, go ahead and tell Tim and the rest of us your thoughts on the roof, because you've been there, and you've been there with the contractor, so you know what it might take if we were to take like four of those skylights out and leave two is what we have in mind.
That's correct. The in-between the old fight house and the new addition, there's sort of an elevator connector area. And you can see the elevator roof from the parking lot. And the low roof in-between there is where the six skylights are that are in question. And it seems like there's been a lot of patching and flashing and things just put together up there piecemeal, and it needs to be probably taken off and put back properly and flashing. So that's, that's the main concern. The actual shingle roof is in good condition. It's a part of your shingle, and it's just held up real well, so I don't think you're gonna have to do anything there. The soffit area around the exterior, you may can see the rotting is from
Some of the soffit washes, so.
The gutters, the way they're constructed on top of the soffit, it allows the water to get in. And so that will need to be replaced. The wood will need to be replaced, and just the gutters replaced there. So that's the extent of the roof and water damage.
And Tim, my thoughts are too, that's gonna get that roof, get she's already had somebody look, but she's also had, got somebody else coming to look. If we can get those bids, I guess, and get that done for too much longer, then we can start on the inside, but I'm like you, the main thing is getting that roof situated.
I'll make a motion. It's ours, soul trouble.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tim. That's what I was thinking.
I'll say it. Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Andrea. We'll, we'll be in touch, and you and when we need to, we can, you can keep us updated. But I, I'm like Tim and the rest of the council, I think the first thing we need to pursue is that roof. Because it needs to be that roof leak is, it's not leaking as poor to, to the skylights report.
Anytime you can get a hole in the roof, here we go, that'll leak.
As we turn over, we've got a few people that saw some of our boards that have come up. We had several come up in August. For either being reappointed or new members. And number six is a reappointment of Mike off to a three-year term on the appeals board. Appeals zoning board, his term expired. Does expire in August of 2015. I called Mike the other day, and he is willing to serve another three-year term. The appeal board is very important. They don't, they don't meet that often, you know, if we have something with a You know, if we have something with the zoning board that maybe there's not a grill, you have to go to the appeal board. We've got three little members on that board, and they do an outstanding job. And he is willing to serve, and that's rare to find folks going through on these boards, especially the appeals boards, zoning boards. So I'd like a motion to reappoint Mike Hall.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second? No, second. All in favor, say aye. Also, on the regular planning and zoning commission board, we've had, uh, actually had four members to come off of that board for reappointment. One was Steve Lawler, Brenda Burson, um, Mr. Tyler, Bill Tyler, and Jane May. Steve Lawler and Brenda Burson have agreed to be reappointed. Steve asked for a shorter term, two years, and Brenda, three years. And so I need two more board members to take Mr. Tyler's place and Jane May's place. So I need some help with that, the council, and find a couple more board members to take their place. Mr. Tyler said he could not, uh, did not need to be reappointed. He was, had a lot going on right now with some health issues, and he needed to be home with his wife, so he has declined, and Jane May has too, unless she calls him back. But she is also thinking about, um, just going ahead, let somebody else take her place. But, uh, so I need a motion to approve these two. Steve Lawler.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor, say aye. Also, uh, number eight we had this afternoon, this morning, I think. Lynn, you want to talk about these? We had several that came off, and then we needed to reappoint, uh, a couple. And I believe you've had to talk to Lynn Gilstrap and Matt Brazer.
Yes, they said they'd be interested in serving on it.
Okay.
Neil's term, I guess it expired into the year.
It's not going to warrant him to serve.
And we had one step down, and, and Matt's going to take that remainder of that term, which is three years. And then we had another one that came off and didn't reappointed, and Lynn's taking her place.
Okay.
Who's stepping down?
Uh, Joey Stotz.
So what we're doing is reappointing Lynn Gilstrap, four years, Matt Brazer, three, and reappoint Neil Seven for four.
And last time, there was some mention to make sure that they're all living within the city limits?
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Greg. Is there a second? Stotz. All in favor, say aye. We don't have, number nine, a motion to adjourn, but I would like to say a few things before we get to that point, unless the council has something else. I want to personally thank, uh, Mike Johnson and all the supervisors that we have. Several months ago, Mike asked me about looking for somewhere else to, or disposal, or garbage, and found. Mike, what we go to.
Going to Winston County.
Winston County was a different. But the result was, it was about over $3,000 a month cheaper. So in a year's time, we saved about $40,000. And that's due to Mike checking, and that was just about Francis' dump truck bought for you a few weeks ago, which you hadn't got yet. You've got the truck, but forget the dump bed on it, so that was enough practically in a year to buy that truck. So thank you, Mike, for doing that. And also, uh, last week, Angela and I met with Adam Cantrell, and I believe Francis was with us also. And through nine months, uh, end of June was nine months with July, August, September, and the rest of this fiscal year, we had a surplus in our budget last year of $219,000. Hopefully, I would surplus to the end of our fiscal year. But at the end of nine months, we're about half a million dollars ahead to the good. So we feel like in the next three months, by the time we finish our fiscal year, that we're going to be way ahead of our, our fiscal year budget to the good, which is very, very good. It shows good management, it shows good leadership, and it shows supervisory, you're doing a great job of not, you know, we're not spending a lot of money. But there's still a lot of things that we need to do, many, many projects that we need to do. But I wanted the council to know that, uh, Alan was very, very pleased with the city's budget at this time. We have a very healthy budget, very healthy, uh, general fund, and the projects that we do, we can afford to do. And I've been here years ago when we couldn't afford to do those things, but, uh, even though a lot of money is spent sometimes, uh, at this time, the city can afford it. So we're very blessed. And we're going to need it to finish Hampton House, and we're going to need it to do other projects that we want to do in this next 18 months while we're here. So I just, the council needs to know that, uh, our budget looks really good. Supervisors are doing a good job of making sure that that runs smoothly. And I know Angela's concerned about it, and she's been here a couple of months and realized the dig checks that we continuously write. See, I told her, she goes home and worries about it. She said, "Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it." But, uh, it is a lot, isn't it, Angela? It's, it's a big, big responsibility, but she's doing a great job. This one, the council, knows our budget looks really good for nine months, but three months later, so. Also, this weekend, uh, it's tax-free weekend. Many people might be aware of that. School supplies and computers and tennis clothes and stuff, I think, or some of that.
We'll have to vote on that any more than.
No. We voted on it, each time it comes up, it's automatic. But just for the public to know that this weekend is tax-free. And also, next Thursday, August the 6th, I think it was the 8th, but it was the 8th. And there, when they sent out the flyer, it was the 8th, but it's actually supposed to be the 6th. Saitel is having a job fair for additional 200 jobs at the Saitel plant from 8 to 5 next Thursday. So hopefully, they will get a big turnout, because they've really pushed, uh, all over several counties to try to get the jobs, you know? So we're hoping that, uh, 200 jobs, being that, pretty easy. And we're very thankful for Saitel. That's several hundred people that work there. Big, big, um, boost to our economy, so we're thankful for Saitel and the jobs they've had. Is there any?
I had something, I wanted to make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay.
For a few minutes, I want to, could name a character?
Okay.
I need to talk about.
Okay. So this person now? Okay, Greg's got a motion to go into executive session. We won't have any other bids when we come out, so when we come out, we're, uh, correct, we're three with bids, so. If anybody wants to state, you can state. If you want to leave, you can leave. Greg's got a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor, say aye.
I'll say.
Any second. All in favor, say aye. How about a motion, Jim?
I'll make it.
Is Lynn there, a motion, Greg?
Yes.
Greg, say. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Alvin. Sorry it took so long.